Try that.
What am I trying?
Talk.
Just talk?
Yeah.
That better? Everybody hear me now? Can you hear me on Zoom? Good?
Good thumbs up on Zoom.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Zoom can hear me now? Okay. So the general public had used this right of way openly and regularly to access the waterfront from the village of Sodas Point and to move safely on foot from the Lakeview neighborhood, pier, beach, lakefront, and bayfront to and from the village of Sodas Point. This right of way remained open for the convenience of the public generally as intended by its original terms from 1899 until 2022, when one of the abutting property owners constructed a fence across the right of way, thereby defeating one of the original purposes for the grant of the right of way. So I am including the entire certified transcript of proceedings filed in the matter of Beretta versus Village of Sodas Point Planning Board, CV 09773, together with a February 14th, 2023 memo prepared by Matthew R. St. Martin Esquire as Exhibit I. I am also including a copy of the consent obtained by the Berettas from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as Exhibit J. The consent is valid for a term of 25 years and is effective only insofar as the rights of the United States are concerned. The consent specifically noted that the consenting shall obtain such permission as may be required on account of any other existing rights. Title to the property underlying the historical 20-foot right of way as it runs along and/or through the properties owned by the Depew family trust, the McNanies and the Berettas, is not settled. Specifically, a letter from Michael Gorman with the Monroe Gorman Title Agency, LLC, dated January 8, 2010, notes that the fee interest in the area under the right of way was not conveyed and that the successor in interest to the Northern Central Railroad still holds the fee interest subject to the rights granted in the 1899 right of way. A copy of that letter and the deeds referenced therein is included as Exhibit K. A copy of additional correspondence from Monroe Gorman and related deeds are included as Exhibit L. Use of the historical right of way and rights to enforce that continued use by the public generally, as was the original intent of the right of way, have been disputed since at least 2018. I am including as Exhibit M copies of correspondence from 2018, which suggests that the village did not have a right to enforce the right of way in favor of the general public. Accordingly, to restore access to the public generally, in accordance with the original purpose and intent of the right of way, the village is seeking to use its power of eminent domain to acquire its own right of way. A copy of the September 21st, 2023 meeting minutes and resolutions scheduling a public hearing is included as Exhibit N. The right of way will be over the same area that was conveyed to the United States of America. In effect, the village plans to co-locate its right of way with the federal government's right of way. The village is not acquiring any right, title, or interest in real property held by the United States of America, nor is the village acquiring any right that is contrary to or inconsistent with the right held by the United States of America. Instead, the village is simply ensuring that the original purpose and intent of the right of way for the use and convenience of the public at large is restored. Acquisition of the permanent easement is within the village's statutory authority and will serve the public use, benefit, or purpose by preserving the historic right of way for a public walkway or path along the waterfront from the village to the Lakeview subdivision to the bayfront to the pier to the beach and to the lakefront in general. If we could please refrain from comments both during my presentation and during whatever anybody in this audience has to say tonight, it would be appreciated. The village will also consider the impacts of the condemnation on the environment. An environmental assessment form has been prepared for the village's consideration in connection with assessing environmental impacts associated with the potential acquisition. No final decision on the condemnation will be made until the village, as the sole involved agency, has satisfied the requirements of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act as well as the eminent domain procedure law with respect to evaluating potential environmental impacts. A copy of the EAF is included as Exhibit O to the hearing record. Since the proposed acquisition is merely seeking to retain an existing walking path, it is anticipated that there would be no environmental impacts as a result of the acquisition. The village will also consider alternatives, including reducing the width of the right of way as well as use of a sidewalk from the Lakeview area to the village. With respect to the sidewalk, it is at street level and only approximately 18 inches from the road. There is no curb, although there is some stormwater drainage areas, but it's still easy for pedestrians to end up on the road or cars to end up on the sidewalk. In addition, the sidewalk is located on the north side of Wickham Boulevard, which means it requires crossing several streets before getting to Bay Street Extension and then crossing onto Bay Street Extension. While the additional time it takes to use the sidewalk may be negligible, the right of way path is safer, more interesting, and more of way path is safer, more interesting, and more appealing to use. Before moving on to the public comment portion, I just want to briefly outline the next steps under the EDPL. Again, the village will continue to accept written comments until the end of this hearing. The village will then consider the comments, complete the seeker process, and issue a determination and findings within ninety days of the close of the public hearing. If the village chooses to move forward with eminent domain, a formal EDPL purchase offer will be made based on an appraisal of the fair market value of the easement to be acquired. The village will then file notices of penancy and a petition for permission to file an acquisition map with the Wayne County Supreme Court, and title to the property rights would transfer to the village upon filing of an acquisition map with the county clerk. At this time, I would open the meeting to public comments. Again, asking that anybody who, yes. That's perfectly fine, but I would ask anyone who comes up to speak, again, states their name and address for the record. I will also note that every single comment that the village has received prior to this evening has also been or will be considered and included in the hearing record. There were voluminous, voluminous number of comments, too many to really go through and list for purposes of this hearing, but we have them all, and they will all be in the record and accounted for and responded to as part of the determination and findings. So, thank you. Hopefully tomorrow, because I will leave this set of documents with the clerk in the village's, village clerk's office. Okay. Do you want this?
Hello, one, two, three, can you hear me? Yeah, let's pick it up. It's lit up. Oh, no, that's just so, there's something that's short.
Oh, okay.
I didn't put it back up.
No. Okay, so the floor is open. Ms. Cook?
Hello, my name is Bridgette Cook with Heath and O'Toole, sixty-six Public Square Holly, and we represent Guy and Kathy Beretta, property owners of eighty-five-ten Wickham Boulevard and one of the property owners of the right of way. My clients and I first want to note that the eminent domain process and the lawsuit that has been spoken are separate processes and do not impact one another, so we're only here to discuss eminent domain. I submitted written comments yesterday, but just to summarize some of them, we urge the board not to use its eminent domain power over the right of way. Eminent domain is the taking of private property and was initially permitted for public use such as roads, bridges, and public buildings, evolved to railroads and transmission lines, but was not created to make cut-throughs on someone's private land. Eminent domain is just not cost-effective for the village. It is required by the Fifth Amendment to have just compensation, and that's defined by the fair market value measured by what the owner has lost and compensates them to put them back in the same position as if the taking had not occurred. Even when only part of the property is taken, damages are measured by finding the difference between the fair market value of the whole before the taking and the fair market value remainder after the taking. So they'll have to pay damages caused by the taking that impaired the remaining portion of the property. The village will have to pay consequential damages of diminishing their property values. An assessment of those exact costs will be determined if this process goes forward, but as you all can assume, taking away waterfront land will severely decrease the value of these homes. The amount to pay three property owners taking some of their waterfront property and significantly reducing the values of their homes will not be cheap. On top of that, the attorney's fees for this process are estimated to be between fifteen and thirty-five thousand dollars. It just doesn't make sense financially. The public largely uses the right of way to connect the beach and the lake houses with the restaurants and shops in the village center. Using the sidewalk to get to the beach, the village center takes about five minutes, yet using the right of way takes about three minutes. The village would be spending a significant amount of money to save people two minutes and a nice view when the sidewalk already exists. And the village spent a significant amount of money putting that sidewalk in. As Kathy said, you need to consider the alternatives, and the sidewalk is really the, the right alternative instead of taking the right of way. Financially, it just makes no sense to endure those costs. And as is said more in my letter, eminent domain is just disfavored generally and is just not a good use of the village's time. I also just wanted to make a note that we believe that Trustee Evans needs to recuse herself and the board must vote again. She's publicly made it known that she opposed closing the easement because doing so would have a negative impact on her retail business because it is near the right of way. As you all may know, she owns Sodas Bay Outfitters, which is located on right off the right of way. Recently, today, she liked a Facebook post that said the right of way should remain open. It is completely inappropriate for a board member to like a post taking a certain stance on this issue. We, we have, I am not, the Facebook post is part of the letter. It has gotten the attention, the like has been removed, but that doesn't right the wrong. The village of Sodas Point.
All right, just please let her finish.
I am almost done, just give me the floor, thank you.
She's almost done, please just let her finish very much.
Thank you. The village of Sodas Point has a code of ethics that was created to ensure that officers and employees hold their positions to serve and benefit the public and not for obtaining unwarranted personal or private gain. The Facebook post was inappropriate, as was the public comments, and per the ethics code, these motions should go back, she should recuse herself and the voting again and restart the process. Thank you for your time.
Where should we put written comments? Yes. You should speak to the fact that you don't want this to be there anymore. Yes. So I, I'm gonna ask, Trustee Evans just addressed that comment.
My business is no longer located in New England, as of October first, I was notified filled it with a big deal, so I don't have any skin in the game, so to speak.
Right, yes, just please state your name and address.
My name is Brendan Depew, and I live at eight-five-zero-four Wickham Boulevard. When you are faced with hard times of sickness, do you take your first prognosis and give up? No, you look for better help. When you lose a job or money is run out, do you start sleeping on the street? No, you look for better options. We all need to do a better job at looking after each other in this small community because right down the road from here, we have very nice neighbors that have gone through hell by you, in front of me and behind, others in front of me and others exploring our town. Put yourself in their perspective. What would you do? They were approved by the Army Corps of Engineers to put up a fence to a right of way only put in place to help out a railroad company over a hundred years ago. This was their legally approved option. There's no need for thieving hard-working people's belongings. If you want something for your own, make it happen without stealing. Where was the town for these three houses during the flood? That land wouldn't even be here if they didn't protect it themselves with the, with over six figures plus of rock alone. Take pride in what you have achieved and be happy for those who have also. Our neighbors here have worked their whole lives to get where they are, don't take that away. You'll have to live with that the rest of your lives. You'll be no better than someone behind bars as a criminal. That's why twelve states enacted prohibitions on this practice. Quite literally, stop taking shortcuts and let's build up this town already owns, what this town already owns. There's so much more to do than a way to the beach that we already have. We have many forefront issues that taxpayer money should be going towards. Look above us, look at the ceiling. We, really? We can't even fix our own fire departments? The people are supposed to protect us in fires? Look at their ceiling. Where's the, our money going for? Their pockets? Not the select fuse witch hunt agenda. It's about time we think about the people here all year round. Lastly, a quote from T. Ellington. "Our system was not set up for the government to be able to do with a man's kingdom what they want. It was set up to protect that man's kingdom, to allow him to, allow him to feel that his borders, no matter how great or small, would always be secure, that he would always be allowed to defend them." Thank you for your time, I am trusting that the right decision is made.
My name is Lance Kellett. I live at seventy-five-eighty-five First Street. My family is at a place, our place on First Street since the night, early nineteen-sixties, and my wife and I have made it our permanent home about seven years ago. There are only a few houses that are any further away from the business district than ours. The right of way has been part of my entire life. To me, this issue boils down to a few basic principles: respect, cooperation, and the rule of law. The right of way was established longer ago than any of us can remember, and while it originally served a purpose for the government, it then became a de facto means for residents to get to the, from the easternmost numbered streets to the business district. The right of way was established and in use when each of these residents purchased their homes. I have absolutely no doubt that someone has determined what they believe is the exact number of steps it takes to get from the business district, from the sidewalk versus the right of way, but that's not really the point, is it? The Berettas have been disrespected by some people using the right of way. Most of the people know, but they have been sought by some. The Berettas unsuccessfully attempted to get permission to install a fence to prevent the use of the right of way through the available legal process through the village, but an agreement was made to add signage to limit the use of the right of way to daylight hours along with other considerations. At some point, that agreement was no longer acceptable to them, and the Berettas then sued for the right to put up this fence. Here's where the expenditure of taxes really started. When a resident sues the village for something that the established governance of the village has made a determination on, the village has to defend itself. Obviously, this defense is paid for with taxes. Everyone's. People with no state or interest, and ironically, the Berettas too. I agree that the taxpayers should not have to pay for the dispute that's going on. It's disrespectful to the taxpayers. The Berettas should not have put up a fence that was not permitted or not as indicated on the permit. It's disrespectful to both the residents and the board responsible for making the decisions on these matters. People using the right of way should have been disrespectful of the homeowners along the route. People should not use the right of way during this ongoing dispute, in my opinion, to try to prove some point. No good comes from escalating the current tension. The situation needs to be resolved in a reasonable and legal way. To my understanding of eminent domain, this seems like the perfect use of it. I believe that if there was a sidewalk through what, what most everyone understood to be the right of way in the first place, there would not have been issues with it. In my experience, people don't seem to wander off the sidewalks to harass homeowners or vandalize the property they pass through. Should the use of, can I, I'm almost done. Should the use of eminent domain be used to put a sidewalk through the path? Should the adjacent homeowners be compensated? If the compensation was a reduction of taxes on them, I'd say yes, but I'd also understand if some people disagreed. It's a slippery slope. When we had the flooding, most all the residents pitched in to help those in need, and the, when the Beretta's property was in peril, they were assisted. They were assisted by many of the same people who are fighting to regain access of the right of way, along with multiple government agencies. In fact, taxes were used to restore the shoreline of each and every home along the entirety of the, of the right of way. I can say with a fair amount of confidence that as a group, these homeowners received a greater benefit from all of our taxes than most. The argument can be made that these residents pay more taxes than most as well, and it's true, but the taxes are based on the property values and they can be contested through legal means. And I'm inclined to think that in this instance, they benefit, that they, I'm sorry, I actually don't take issue with taxpayer money being spent on the shoreline remediation because the shoreline and the right of way, to me, are a public asset. I'm embarrassed that a few people using the right of way treated the residents along the path disrespectfully, and I'm also embarrassed that this couldn't be resolved reasonably. People aren't supposed to behave like this. People shouldn't put their self-interests ahead of the rest of the communities. People shouldn't justify the response of the behavior of a few to the detriment of most. People shouldn't escalate situations or be confrontational and expect a positive outcome. For me, aside from the real change of heart on the part of the Berettas, I have no more energy for it. If the situation were to change and the Berettas were to have the graciousness to allow passage, I would gladly and politely walk through and mind my own business like I have since I was a little kid.
Good evening. My name is Sue Cromie. My name is Sue Cromie. I live at eighty-five-eighty-one Wickham Boulevard, and I face out into the water and have the sidewalk in front of my house. Long before the sidewalk existed, thirty-three years ago, we had a dock. We had to give up the dock because the town told us we didn't own the property and we only had rights to the dock, and they became an eyesore, they weren't maintained. At first, we had.
You were like you're talking to a kid.
Yeah, you gotta, gotta hold it right up.
Okay, I live at eighty-five-eighty-one Wickham Boulevard, Sodas Point, and I live facing the water. When I first moved into the property thirty-three years ago, we had docks. In those docks, we were constantly monitoring them because the community used them as their own playground. Now, we lost those docks to the town, and at first, it was, felt like a loss, but considering that we have these lovely sidewalks in front of the house, it's great. I, I have no problem with losing those, maybe my ex-husband does. Now, the RO is a historical path, and it's also been identified in a document on record, the Village of Sodas Point Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. And that doc, that program is on the record and has been approved as of two thousand and twelve and signed by three different jurisdictions. The Sodas Point Trustees as of two thousand and eleven, the Secretary of State as of two thousand and twelve, the U.S. Ocean and Coastal Resource Management as of two thousand and twelve. Now, when the Army Corps was discussed for the DACA document, for the Berettas to be able to get permission to be able to put the fence up, they were not informed or let know. or let know that this document existed. Within that document, the Wickham Boulevard Greenway Trail is identified and used for general foot traffic. The very documents that they use, the brothers used the DACA document to get their permit, they're actually in violation of their own document. Because if you know that this wrote, this R O W is historical, one of the contentioned things that they have to do as the consentee is to maintain the historical presence. The R O W is a historical pathway. It has been there for a hundred and twenty-five years and needs to be remained open and available to the community. It's been a campaign on the part of these families to usurp the Wickham Boulevard Greenway Trail. And they purchased that property knowing that this dock, this R O W was owned by the U.S. government. And the expense that they are causing to the Sodas Point community makes the Sodas Point community injured party who stand to lose this historical pathway for their selfish actions. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room want to speak?
Very quick. My name is Gail Portakowski. I live on Lake Stone Drive. It's a fence, people. It's a shortcut. That's all this is. You know, five years from now, what we're gonna face, we don't even know what it is. Ninety-nine years ago, things were different than they are now. The waterway, the environment, the mother nature, time has eroded everything away. What was there, what was there ninety-nine years ago is not there now. It's a personal problem. It's private property. You're asking people to walk through private property. I mean, when I walked through Lori Higginson to go through Deb Ryan's to get to Phil Yost's house, probably that, that's what you're doing. The only number, the only houses, I'm sorry, I'm shaking because I'm so annoyed at how nasty and ugly everybody has gotten in this village. It's so wrong. The only people that I could see that this really affects are the numbered streets one through four. They may use the shortcut. I don't get up in the morning to think about the shortcut. I don't use the shortcut. I don't care about the shortcut. But I do care about residents. I do care about the people that live, live here. And they've lived here a long time, and they're important people to this community. And they're not, it's a shortcut. Visitors love the visitors. Everything we do in this village is for the visitors. They come and they and by noon on Labor Day, you can roll a bowling ball through town, they're gone. It doesn't matter. They don't come here because there's a bathroom, because there's an information center, because there's a shortcut. They just come here because Sodas Point sells itself. They come here because of a class reunion, a family vacation, or whatever. But they don't come here because of the shortcut. They're visitors. When are we gonna start caring about the residents? The people that live here, the people that work here? We're all the same, so sorry. We all worked very hard to live here. This is where we choose to live. This is where these people choose to live. Why should they not be allowed to live in their houses and enjoy their properties the way the rest of us do? I'm not, it's not, it's a shortcut.
From the research I've done Subassage seventy-five thirty-nine North Ontario Street. From the research I've done on eminent domain, the, the biggest thing is that it's a necessity for public use. For roads, for bridges, for public utilities. Like Gail said, this is a shortcut. Yes, it was a historical shortcut. It was historical. But now there's a sidewalk. There wasn't a road when that eighteen ninety-nineties went through. It's not necessary anymore. An eminent domain is a necessity. And this isn't a necessity. Thank you.
I'm Diane Traywitz, eighty-six twenty-six Greg Street. I had not planned on speaking, so I don't have notes. But my family has been here since the late eighteen hundreds. I spent my childhood here. And my husband and I decided to retire here to a warm, loving community. And we moved here in sixteen years ago, and that's what it was. Since then, this village has gone to hell. And we are finding, and I'm not just addressing the row. I'm addressing what the board is doing to this village. We have laws we, that we need to follow. They were developed for this village. And now we're having people fabricate stories against their neighbors so they can put up a fence. It's ridiculous. The fence is supposed to be four feet high. It's six feet high. That has been addressed for three years. Nothing has been done. You have an enforcer who's doing nothing. If I wasn't doing my job and was incompetent, I would have been fired. Something needs to be done. And we need to follow these laws and rules. Take down the fences and keep the row where it is. Berettas knew when they bought that house that that was there. We bought a house with the understanding that we had ten feet of water rights. We found that out afterwards. When we moved here, we did not. We did not put up a fence. We did not argue with the neighbors. We became best friends. So we didn't have ten feet of water rights, but we had loving neighbors.
My name is Lisa McNamie, and I live at eighty-five oh eight Wickham Boulevard. I'm on the row. I'm not doing it. Yes, it is. Okay, so this is a copy of what I gave the village many years ago. It's the eighteen ninety-nine. What the village is doing is using little pieces of it, which makes me very upset. So it says on here that in eighteen ninety-nine, Wickham Boulevard did not exist. There were no roads except for a twenty-foot right of way that went to Art Robb's house, which has somehow disappeared, and it was part of the accused property. It said that if another road was ever created, this could go away. And also, this row went to a pier on Catchum's Yard, which does not exist anymore. That pier is not there. They are not talking about the pier at the beach. They're talking about a pier that no longer exists. And I have been harassed since two thousand seventeen with the flooding. My life has been very, very hard after my husband died.
Have you used one of these? You just push it? My name is Kathy Depew. My name is Kathy Depew. I am here, as I am assuming all of you are, because of the love, peace, and tranquility that Sodas Bay and Point offer. My family has owned property on Sodas Bay since nineteen thirteen. I have been coming here since I was a year old, which was eighty years ago. My nine grandchildren, as well as my sister and brother's grandchildren, are fifth generation, who still come here. We have seen many changes in that time, both good and not so good, and have had to adapt. But in all of that time, I have never seen the animosity that I have seen since after the flood in two thousand seventeen because of two hundred and fifty feet of waterfront. I have watched my neighbors suffer greatly. I have seen adults, not children, but adults, pass by yelling obscenities to them, giving them obscene gestures and much, much more. When we all bought our homes, we did know there was an R O W. Things have changed since that time in many ways. I realize that it has been open for many years and change is hard to accept. As the years pass, things have changed on the R O W. The same way we can't take back our youth, everything changes. I have heard that many people signed a petition to open the R O W. I live at the beginning of the R O W and have been observed or have observed and talked to many people who approached the R O W and asked if it is closed. I tell them, yes, it is, and why? I can honestly say ninety percent of them are fine with it and understand then and turn around with no problem. I personally feel it's a few people that just want to take a shortcut. There really isn't needed. A shortcut really isn't needed. We have an alternative. The village put in sidewalks to go from Bay Street to the beach. It is, if it's the water view you're looking for, just before Fifth Street going toward the beach, you have the view. Eminent domain is going to be a very expensive endeavor. I would think there are so many more important things that the village needs to spend money on. Shouldn't we all respect each other and their properties? Don't we want to teach our children and our grandchildren to be appreciative of this beautiful place that we all love and to treat people with respect and kindness, no matter who they are or where they live? Change is inevitable and can be good as we are in a fast-moving, ever-changing world. Thank you for your time. I'm afraid it's gonna fall.
I have to face the people I talk to. You notice I set my software side up. My name is Dick Depew. I'll send my software side up first. Represented the family trust. And many people have a lax nostalgia from a time when they were a younger person or a younger person's clothes. But that train for all of us has left the station. It was a gift to enjoy. We did. Not a birthright, but an entitlement.
Can we get you to go there? So it's recorded. It's the microphone. The microphone is up here. I can have you, if you want to face everyone, you can spin it. I just have to
How about now? Our engineers agrees with us. Okay? Because they, they took the wrong and they agree it has been outlived. It's useless. For about the last second. Throw it back the next twenty-five years. We have filed with Wayne County Clerk's office and elected to shut it down. It's like an audition. And we have elected to shut it down. There is no row. In fact, in the deed for nineteen ninety-nine, or eighteen ninety-nine, which by the way, they got the best person with the handwriting. Beautiful. And it says that if the, that if an alternative comes up, and it has, you know that. And it ends, there's no place to go, that it actually reverts back to the owners. But we know trying to wrestle this away from the Army Corps of Engineers, the federal government would be a monstrous task. We don't want to do that. But a very ambitious and so the flow is, the flow is not in effect. Okay? Now, when you assess the valuation of properties, whether it's the row or without the row, there's a huge difference, huge difference. You know that. So a very ambitious administrator in the town decided and run about the consent adoption. Now we're talking eminent domain, which is confiscating private property, our property. How does this benefit the community? There's no, there's no mandate to do this. There's not even a majority to do it. What are we trying to do? Confiscate people's properties now? You're elected, you, the board, you didn't run as a socialist. You wouldn't even be on this board if you did that. You know that. You either ran as a Republican, a Democrat, an independent, or conservative. So you ought to be representing your people. And confiscating private property is not representing the values of Wayne County or the village of Sodas Point. And I've been here since nineteen sixty-two. So I'm familiar with the political landscape in terms of how they feel. And the people in this three-one-five code aren't taking people's private property. And when you do that, okay, you own it now. You didn't own it before, even though people like to say they did. They did not own it. But now you will own it. You'll own it, the entire row. You can do anything you want with it. You know, the Nazis, they said if you tell a lie long enough, often enough, it becomes the truth. So now all of a sudden property you said you owned for years, which you didn't, you will own. Now, when you own it, what can you do with it? Well, you could put twenty feet of contraption slabs in there with lighting, benches, maybe some kiosks. Certainly, the trash containers will be filled and spilled out over our property. Not a very optic site. And obviously, you're gonna degrade our property. Who on this board ran for a platform that excluded this socialistic agenda? I dare say none of you did. So why are we here? Why are we here? And we're gonna challenge this. This family will challenge this. I never would want to put a fence up, but I'll tell you now, because of these draconian effort to take away our property, I'm putting in for a fence permit. I want that in a minute. And I'm gonna block my line, okay, with a fence, which I never would do. Okay, but I'm gonna do it. And I'm blocking not, regardless of the outcomes of this, this thing. I'm blocking it because I'm blocking the Army Corps of Engineers. They gave me permission to do it. And I can show you the paperwork and I can show you where my line is. And that's what we'll do. And we're going to be very, we're going to be very, we will challenge this seizure in a vigorous manner and adjudicate the process. We're not going quietly into the night. And I'll tell you, the money is going to be a lot because people know the value of this property. There's 250 feet of waterfront. And you think that you're going to send us some, you're going to give us a homemade appraisal and then give us some chump change to go away? After you've degraded our property and taken the value away? That's not happening. Yeah, I think so. I'm asking the board of trustees, one thing. You weren't put in to do this. You've got to stand up. You've got to have a spine. Okay? You've got to fight back. You're the firewall. You're the firewall. You're the check and balance of this government. Okay? Control it. Take back control. Take back control and end this madness. And when you go to that meeting tomorrow, okay? The town meeting, and that fourth item comes up there, other business, you vote no. Thank you. Everyone be well, be safe.
Get that away from me. I'm Tom Johns. I live at 7594 Fifth Street, and I wish I didn't have to follow him. But I, I guess just as a little history, my grandparents bought a place in the 30s. I'm 71 years old, and this is the first summer I've never walked through there. My family has done it. My grandkids have done it. My children have done it. My aunts and uncles have done it. It's part of the charm of Sodas Point. It's important that we keep things in Sodas Point that we have. I live on a right-of-way. I live on the lake. People cross in front of my property all day long. Yeah, there's more people crossing, and yeah, some of them are slobs. But that's part of what I bit off when I bought the place. I knew there was a right-of-way, just like they knew there was a right-of-way. The village is growing. More people are crossing the right-of-way. They know that. I know that. We all have a choice. If we don't like it, we can sell and move. I'm going to keep it short, but it's part of the charm of Sodas Point. It's in the LWRP, the plan that the village has put together and adopted. And I think that's where it belongs. Thank you.
I don't know what way to face now. Good evening. My name is John Wonder. I will, I'd like to see everyone. My name's John Wonder. My wife Kathy Griesma and I live at 7484 South Fitzhugh Streets. Our family has owned our property since the early 60s. She has grown up here, and we're very proud to still be part of this community. We encourage not only the village but all of the parties to resolve this issue without the use of eminent domain. The row and eminent domain were established over 100 years ago. Has the land in question actually been surveyed? If it has, why are there no markers showing us exactly what the land is that is in question? It is our belief that yesteryear's row may not be the same as today's. The use of eminent domain sets a precedent for this board and future boards to take property from other property owners as they see fit. This, you should perceive with caution. We encourage a respectful and peaceful resolution to this issue without the use of eminent domain. Thank you.
What this gentleman just said really leads into what I.
Please state your name and address. Thank you. Sorry.
Kathleen Beretta, 8510 Wickham Boulevard. What that gentleman just says is going to lead me into what I'm about to say. We're talking about eminent domain here. Talking about taking land, taking your land, my land. This is just the beginning, people. There's a document here. It's called New York State. It's an application that's on the website. And this document is the beginning of taking your land. This document wants a public boardwalk. Yep. It's going to go in front of all the restaurants, fishing charters, Spencer Marina, Leo's Landing, Charles Point docks, and a parking lot. And taking away their parking lot. Herman Park. They want floating docks. Expand the parking lot. Where are they going to put these docks? They don't know. What land are they going to take away next for the expansion of the parking lot? They don't know. Design a public pier. I hope it's not going to be in your backyard. It might be. Lake Shore Trail. Connecting the old lighthouse to the new one. All you people on the beach, be ready. Taking your land. State Route 14, bicycles. They want a bicycle trail. Is it going to go in front of your yard? Back of your yard? And how much is this going to cost? Does anybody know? What is the bottom line? I even tried to foil this? I don't know. What is this going to cost? The village. I'm not doing this to hurt anyone. I'm doing this to protect my land. My father always told me, the only thing you can do is buy real estate. The government can't take it. Well, if he was living today, I'd have words with him today. Because guess what? The government is going to take it. Isn't that just us, people? It's you. And be ready, because this is on the website and it's filed in New York State. Wake up.
Anybody else in the room?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Philip Leone. I live at 7573 Fifth Street. I've been well aware of what's going on here. I've been very vocal about it. My marina benefits from this. By slip runners from 1st through 4th Street use the right-of-way to get over to my marina. It benefits my business. It benefits my property. It benefits the rest of downtown. But I can't, I, someone else said earlier, I don't think anybody knows where the right-of-way really is because they didn't stake it out. The village, under some kind of agreement with the Ketchum family, which everybody in this room has been probably trespassing on their property to get onto the right-of-way at Beretta's. The right-of-way is actually where the trees are and where Beretta or Ketchum keeps all his docks. Nobody staked it out. Everybody in here has been trespassing the whole time. So before we go and take Beretta's land, we got to look at where the property lies. Because when you look at it, if the United States government decides to put a fence up right where they have their fence, guess what? All this money spent and everything we're doing is a moot point. It's going to be a big waste of time and a big waste of money. And as far as all the turmoil, it's poor governance, Dave. All right? It's on you. All right? You keep your mouth shut. I'm talking. All right, Dave? You should have put a lot of information on.
Put up, pointing at anybody and telling.
She just said.
I've asked people to please be respectful.
All right, back down.
Lawyer.
Sit down.
During this hearing.
No.
I'm not sitting down.
You can sit down.
Respectful to everybody in this room or you will be escorted out and not permitted to speak. Yes, everybody should be respected, no matter what they have to say.
Thank you. So to put this out there without all the information and without a survey, we're not having it clearly marked, and then allowing another person right on the other side of the fence who does not own waterfront property to block the very right-of-way that we're all talking about. And it's not the right-of-way you think. It's the actual right-of-way. All right? Somebody's been allowed to keep their docks and block that area with hoists and docks for a long, long time because they submitted a map that excluded the right-of-way property and they made the docks look like they went to their property, which is landlocked. I read the deed. I don't see where they have permission to do it. Dave allowed it to happen. Maxine was involved in it when she was a trustee. So they basically made him reduce, he had a letter of permission for two docks, which increased to four, which in 2018 miraculously was reduced back to two. And then all of a sudden, there was another right-of-way parallel to this one for a dollar. They gave up the property. So we have to come clean with the whole thing. Jennifer Evans has to come clean. Yes, she's moving out of my building, but she hasn't said where she's going. She may still benefit from the right-of-way. Where are you going, Jennifer? You said you weren't closing your business. All right, we have to know. Can we afford to do this? We don't have the, what happens if we do this whole thing? And then the federal government fences it like the Coast Guard Station. What do you do then? You just bought a right-of-way you can't use. So we need to know how much. We need to know where it's coming from, and we need to know if we have it in the budget. All right? We don't know those expenses because nobody shared them. They're just throwing numbers. Have a good night.
Can you hear me? My name is Linda Youngman. I live at 7553 North Fitzhugh Street. I'm new to Sodas Point. I've only been here, living here five years or six years. But I've been in Sodas Point my whole life. My grandparents used to rent the romp out or romp in, little pink cottage. And we used to walk through that right-of-way to go to swimming lessons in the summer. Many of you who have lived in this area used to go there too. And Sodas Point is a wonderful place. That's why I moved here. And it does have charm. And I want to provide support for what Tom Johns said earlier, which is we want to keep it a wonderful place to live. And I'm sorry, but that right-of-way, being able to walk along the water and being able to go to the beach is part of the charm. I realize also people are very emotional. And people have been very vocal about this issue. I haven't been, but I am tonight to just say, I think people have been vocal and kind of nasty sometimes because they do feel strongly about keeping Sodas Point's charm. And I feel strongly about it too. I do have to say, it does sound like a lot, an expensive proposition to go for eminent domain. But I think the village has felt that's the only way forward to be able to keep the charm that Sodas Point has and access to the beaches. And what I would like to suggest is maybe there's another way forward. The Berettas clearly do not want eminent domain either. Could we not work out a compromise with them that keeps a portion of the right-of-way open? And Sodas Point keeps its charm, but we don't have to go all the way down to eminent domain. That's my suggestion, that that be considered. Thank you very much.
Yes. Hi, my name is Chuck Pishi. I live at 7567 Fourth Street. We are kind of in a unique position because all the discussion about what goes on with the row, we've watched it. We bought the property 21 years ago, used it as a cottage, so we weren't here full-time. Four years ago, we moved in full-time. I said, this is literally the place I want to die. You know, I don't want to go anyplace else. We watched this go from a nice path where people would just walk through. I think it's, I met the Berettas there the first time because of walking through that. Was it convenient? Sure, very convenient. But what I've seen in the last four years, first of all, it's not most of you that are causing any problems. It's hundreds and hundreds of people that park over by the parks, walk all the way through. And this goes on, you know, day after day during the summer. I've seen it. I've seen the Berettas pull out of their driveway. And all of a sudden, there's people sitting on their dock. There's people by their fire pits, sitting in their chairs. You know, I approached somebody once about it and said, are you friends, family? And they said, no, I thought this was a public park. No, it's not a public park. It's private property. You know, so the row may have been great for all the time. 21 years ago when we bought the place, it was great to see. It was great to walk through it. But times have changed, and the people going through it now are not you guys that are causing the problem. It's all the people coming in from Sodas, Newark, Lyons, wherever, and using that path. And they are disrespecting. At night, you know, we've got a big picture window. We look right over that whole area. We see the fence. We see the Ketchum property. It's right there while we're sitting in the living room. We're looking at the whole thing, hour after hour. And the things I've seen at night, the, you know, people coming back from the bars. You hear the stories. They put all the stories out there. They're true. I've seen them. We've seen people sneaking around behind the trees. What are they doing? I don't want to know. There's no lights back there. We'll keep it that way. So I'm just saying that I love Sodas Point. I came here to die. You know, that's my hope. They say there's nothing sure, but, nothing sure, but. I'm not trying to rush the point. I'm not rushing the point, but you know, they say there's nothing certain, but death and tax. Well, I'm hoping that death will take me out of Sodas Point and not taxes being raised for ridiculous amounts like Emmett Gonne. Because it's not going to cost $35,000. She might get $35,000. It's going to cost hundreds of thousands by the time the property's purchased and everything. So there's a court case for the row. Let that play out. I don't even know why eminent domain is being discussed when there's a court case going right now. It never should have brought up. You know, maybe they already know they're going to lose it. Maybe that's why they brought up the eminent domain. I don't know. But like I said, death and taxes and let death take, not taxes. Let's not get driven out by taxes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Williamson. And I live at 8660 Brecht Street, Sodas Point. I have been a resident in this community. I came here in 1958. And we bought property here 50 years ago this year. I resided in three different homes, and when I came here, this community had more screen doors that were saying this way than this way. So we all have to take into consideration what has been accomplished and what we've been able to do as a community. I'm not here tonight to take a position, but I want to make sure everyone understands that I do have a copy of this document that was produced by Wayne County that shows a 20-foot right-of-way. This was redated in 1969, and it's the latest copy that I have available. Anyone who wants to see it, it clearly depicts the 20-foot right-of-way. All of a sudden, we have a situation where people think that this right-of-way does no longer exist. It has been here since the 1900s. I actually had a gentleman that came to my business and said, I used to come to Sodas Point. And because of the railroad right-of-way, that's how I came to this community. So we're talking about a frontage foot, but so many of us who live here and enjoy the waterfront and are able to walk along the waterfront fail to find the people that come here to walk along the waterfront just to hear the waves come against the shore. We all probably enjoy that because we know where the beach is. We know where to come. But if this pathway is. We all probably enjoy that because we know where the beach is. We know where to come. But if this pathway is taken, those people that no longer have access to the beach will be confused and it's unfortunate because as Mr. John said, he's been here longer than I am, although as a year younger than I. But I can say that we all understand that. It existed. And I appreciate the opportunity to walk it or to walk on the beach. My wife goes on the beach every day. And I think you people are missing the point, meaning the property owners, these three effective property owners that the quality of life people have enjoyed. There has to be a better solution than what we sat here tonight with. I thought that there was a solution where there was going to be a gate. The gate was going to be open and closed during the evening hours to avoid the discomfort that these people do have. Yes, there are more people here, but it's good for the businesses here. It does help reduce our taxes, whether we want to admit it or not, because these people spend money in this community. I don't want to see this community go in the wrong direction where we have it unaffordable for people who have lived their entire lives here and now retired here. And I concur that we need to address that on a longer term basis. But tonight, I'm saying anybody who wants to see this 20 foot right of way, I'll put it out on the table after the meeting. You're more than welcome. It's from Wayne County. It's the tax map that was produced and the latest update was done 1969. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jonas Baker. Seventy one twenty eight Baby Drive, up on the hill. I don't have personally right on with the line. When I was a kid, walked through there and everything else. Can't blame them. You don't want to lose your dirt. People looking in their windows, can't blame them. Convenient for the people who walk through there, visitors, who have you, can't blame them either. Question, if this thing was in eighteen ninety nine by the bay, hasn't the bay took some of that dirt away? Figure it out. Maps, numbers, what have you, whatever the bay took away, put it back. The deed is nothing but a contract. You can rewrite the deeds. As long as interesting parties all agree, you can rewrite those lines. Have it by shoreline. Not overly happy because you're still there, but they're not looking in your windows. You're not losing the dirt. Or Mac Domain, that's the Germer stuff. No. To me, it makes more logic to put back what dirt was there. Go from that shoreline in. You're going to put a little four foot walkway. You still have five feet on your side. Still away from their house. It's not perfect. A little bit of difference to all of it. Question. This railroad company, is it still exist?
The railroad company that granted the right of way? No.
Then you got a problem. According to Superior Court that I spent seven years and $35,000 on, found out the village, there's a bunch of things, the village has no right of say on anything. You want to argue with? Get your old lawyer up here. I like to sue his ass. Superior Court, they took, they took Sodas Bay Height Company, Orlando Land up there. Superior Court took the rights of that and they fought for those rights. Because that company no longer exists. If you want, get the Superior Court to vote it. That just locked you up for quite a few years. I know, seven years, 35 grand. That's the monkey wrench part. So it's either that or you sit there and cut a deal. One or the other. But to take taxpayer's money and hurt people, that's not a good thing.
Sort of a partial here. All right. So my name is Damian Wideman. I'm on eighty five seventy five Wickham, which is the corner of Second Street. And unfortunately, I've only been around for 30 years. I know that pales in comparison to many of you. Newcomers. I, I, I don't like the fact that I think that the property owners are trying to privatize this land. Take it away from the use of the public as it was intended in eighteen ninety nine. As such, I guess I'm okay with initiating the use of eminent domain because it seems like the only path at this point. The planning board is unanimous in their decision that the fence should not block the right of way. The pathways in the LWRP. The Department of State says the walkway is valid for public use. Bill McKee was insightful at Planning Board when we were talking about this. He said that when we've let go of a right of way in the village before, we've regretted it later. All the property owners along the right of way knew there was a walkway when they purchased the properties. We've all seen the language for the easement, for the convenience of the public generally. It is more convenient to use a right of way rather than the sidewalks. No one can determine for the public or for me or for you what's more convenient or that it doesn't know or no longer is convenient for you to use. The walkway is also safer and appealing to you. Somebody mentioned that earlier. Wickham Boulevard is nicer than it was with new pavement, improved drainage. But along Wickham, the sidewalk is at street level. There's no curb and you're only 18 inches from the road. We live in an age of distracted driving. Ask Leo Halligan, who got hit by a car this summer with a hundred feet of eighty five ten Wickham Boulevard. In some communities, easements like ours, like this one we're talking about, are deemed to be assets and have preservation status. Our claim to fame is the Great Sodas Bay. We're a resort town. We put ourselves out as a resort town. Why wouldn't we keep this pathway open, allowing the public to walk along the water? If safety and security is the main concern, as the property owners have asserted, then they can reorient the fence parallel to the walkway to protect their homes and docks, just like Mr. St. Martin suggested at Planning Board. Or they could put up cameras. If chosen not to do that, and their intent is to privatize the land, take from the public, give to the private. And so we're left with the question, the rights of the few versus the rights of many. I believe that in America, most of the time, the rights of the many for the property owners, hundreds of people pass through on a busy summer weekend. The vast majority of them are respectful and walking to use our beaches and parks or to get food and drink in our business district. I believe that the good people of Sodas Point should not lose their rights because of a few bad apples. But that's what's happened. Path is blocked and the public's right to convenience is ended. The walkway that residents have used for over 100 years should not simply go away because those owners don't think it's necessary anymore. That's why I support the use of eminent domain to return this to the public. We had another solution. That's great. But return it to the public. Eminent domain. We're talking about taking away someone's property. Are we really? We're talking about taking over an existing easement whereby deed, the land is already encumbered. We're not taking away their homes. We're not taking away their docks. We're not developing condominiums. We're returning the path to the people like it was last year and ensuring that it remains open for the convenience of the public. It's time to put this issue to rest for good and for the good of the general public. I'll comment on some of the actions that they've had to deal with. If you're down in the village, most of us have dealt with that. I've dealt with some of the same things they're talking about in the corner of Second Wickham. And yes, people are not as nice as they used to be. They're disrespectful. Finally, once the right of way is open for public use again, let's make darn sure that on fireworks night or blow off day, that someone in a uniform is positioned there as our best effort to make sure this path is safe for those using it and for the property owners. Thank you.
I'm a little conflicted here because oh, Mexie Napoli, seventy four eighty seven South Ontario Street. I'm a little conflicted because I have prepared a statement. But I also read a great letter from Penny Shockley. And she's not here tonight. But really, the sentiments of that letter, you know, really cover everything about why we should keep that right of way open. But I encourage you to go online. It's online. Penny posted it on Facebook. And if she has been involved in the Greenway Trail Initiative and that on right of way for many, many years. So I encourage you to read that. I also want to say, I'm a newcomer, I'm a baby here. I love it here. But I've got people peeing in my yard too. I mean, what the heck? Caitlin's right next door. I mean, they come through at two and three in the morning with beer bottles and everything else. We live in a tourist town. That's just the way it is. Okay? You live here, you accept it. And Phil, I have no idea what you're talking about. So I just want to say, it's really of great disappointment that that the opening of this historic right of way has wound up at a meeting about opening it up by eminent domain. I have come before this board, this board on three occasions and I've asked you the same question and I'm going to ask it again. Why are you not supporting the village planning board? Why didn't the CEO, when there was a stop work order, stop it? The planning board asked the Barretta to remove a portion of the fence and then issued a stop work order, but nothing was done. They did not file an injunction. It took two months before they even filed a lawsuit. Directly after the planning board meeting, where the planning board denied them or asked them to remove a portion of the fence, they began to pile pots and sticks and bricks, everything around the cottonwood tree, so nobody could pass. Then they hired a contractor to move rocks. So it was totally impossible. I mean, you couldn't get up, get around there. And then in the spring, they hired a contractor to move about five yards of soil in and seeded the rest of the tow path. Let me ask you this. This is all under a stop work order. The entire process has been an arduous journey with many mistakes along the way. The simple fact, the public was not allowed to speak at the planning board meetings. Letters were not read into the record and when materials were assembled for the lawsuit, many were denied a voice because their correspondence was missing and not included. And they were not included. They finally were. Kathy Barretta, a member of the planning board, who said she recused herself, but she actually participated in the process. When letters were sent to the board in support of the right of way, Kathy directly answered them. In addition, Kathy obtained a copy of a petition of names in support for the opening of the right of way.
Could you just focus on, on the issue of?
Yeah. The Barretta's bought their property knowing the right of way existed. The minutes of the 2004 Planning Board meeting reflect that. When Luzette Eves came before the board, the public right of way was discussed. And when asked by the Planning Board Chair, Jay DeWispelier, both the Barretta's and McNanny's acknowledged its existence. I am in support of taking the right of way, even though I am disappointed that the village did not remedy this opening months ago.
Okay, anybody else in the room?
Hi, I'm Roy Highland, seventy five eighty Lakestone Drive. How come every address has seventy five eighty or something? It's very confusing. But lived in Sodas for many years, Sodas Point not so long. This meeting is for the discussion of eminent domain. I've heard other arguments, but Mr. Pugh, unbelievable Italian, what a slippery show eminent domain can lead to in future years. All the projects that we talked about, which I totally support, but not if you have to use eminent domain. You're going to take over this right of way that's up in dispute. Nobody knows the answer, so we took it to court. Isn't that what you do? Why are you doing this before the court decides whether the Barretta's are correct or the board is correct? You made a statement. You made a stand. You said they put it in the wrong place. I don't know. I have nothing to know about that kind of stuff, but somebody said it was six foot, somebody said it's four foot. It was here. It's either in the right place or the wrong place. The board either approved it with Art Williams or they made a mistake and the new attorney, I don't know your name, sir, said, no, that was incorrect. Well, that's what the courts are for. You would, if I came to you with a problem and you didn't agree, you would say, Roy, take it to court. Let the court decide. I understand your position, but that's what the courts decide. Why are you going to eminent domain while you have a pending court suit? A court case that's going to decide whether you were correct in your interpretation or the Barretta's were correct. Which way is it? Why are we talking about eminent domain before that's been decided? Is the board sure they're going to lose this case? Why else would you go that way? If the Barretta's can keep their fence because the court says that's what you approved or the court says, no, the Barretta's have to take that fence down, then and only then should you be talking about eminent domain. Why are we talking about this now? You, we're in the middle of a litigation. I know you can't talk about it. You'd say that. But I, my whole point, I had a whole list of things. People have addressed it. But this meeting is about eminent domain, a slippery slope, as everybody says. What's next? Have we ever done eminent domain in Sodas Point before? So why do we want to get involved with that? Who knows? 10 years from now, you people will be all off the board. There'll be another board says, oh, we could just do that with eminent domain. It's been done. There's precedent. Don't go there. Just don't go there. Let the court case proceed. It's expensive. How much money have you spent on that court case so far? I have seen no figures. You lose or you, you win, fine. Then we have a resolution. The Barretta's lose, they appeal. It goes for more money. Guy's a very rich guy. He'll go forever. Is there a limit on how high you will go to pay for the property? Is there a limit? Hundred thousand? Two hundred fifty, thirty thousand? You have no idea what that's going to cost. Is there a limit? We have other priorities. The village hall that's crumbling five years ago? I mean, this is not critical. Eminent domain says a critical, vital need for the community. This is a convenience. It would be great, but it's not critical. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Go ahead, guys. Got people waiting on Zoom this Friday.
I have lots of pages of notes I wanted to share tonight, but I don't think I need it. There are a lot of things I had on my mind to speak about tonight. I would have gone on for many, many minutes if I was allowed to. There are a lot of things I had on my mind to speak about tonight, and I've gone on for many, many minutes if I was allowed to. The thing that has caught my attention more over the last nine months is the amount of misinformation that has been spread on social media. I'm going to give you a couple of examples of that. The village owns the right away. Not true. The town of Sodas owns the right away. Not true. We don't own to the water. We do. Our dock was illegally installed. It was not. The right away is still passable. It is not. We don't pay taxes on the land that covers the right away. We do. But my point is that social media is what got us to this point. We have heard so many lies, accusations, even threats against us. I don't understand how it got to that point, but it has. But and the other thing too is it's been brought up a number of times, nobody in this room has any clue what this is going to cost. There are so many components of it that haven't even been raised yet. Not only you've got attorney's fees, but you've got appraisals, you have court fees, you have a whole list of things that's probably easily going to reach a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if not more. The value of our property, which will be determined by some independent appraisers, could be well beyond anybody's belief at this point in time. At some point, even if the village gets their eminent domain wish, they're going to have to come up with a huge amount of money. Where's it going to come from? When there's so much more to be done in this community that they're worried about a right away based on people's nostalgia, and that's all it is. If you listen to most people in this world, we're going to be talked about what they did 60 years ago, or 80 years ago, or 10 years ago. That is not the point. Nostalgia should not make the deciding factor when it comes to whether or not eminent domain is the right thing to do. It's not. And as many people have said, this is just the beginning. There are so many projects in this village that could eventually require the village getting more land only through eminent domain. So this could be the tip of the iceberg in terms of what happens over the next 10 years or so. I hope it doesn't get to that point. I hope that the trustees, who were elected by the people of this village, considered what's best for the entire village, not just a few outspoken people who have their own agenda that they're trying to establish. Think about how this is going to affect everybody. People who live on South Shore Road, Margarita Road, Silk Shore Road, Fitzhugh Street, Centel Street, Overlook. All these people don't even know, don't know about the right away, they don't use it, and they don't care about it. But yet in the end, all these people are going to be affected by increased taxes being caused by a silly thing like trying to take or seize our land by eminent domain. This is the beginning, folk. This is the beginning of many, many attempts like this and the beginning of many, many dollars that we're going to be spending for something so trivial as this. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else in the room? Jim on Zoom? You should be able to unmute yourself. That's I'm calling on them because they got their.
Yes, Dave, real quick. All I want to say is, I've been listening to this whole thing. I've been living down here. I understand the whole thing down here with the. Can you hear me? You can't hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I agree. I agree most of what they're just going to say. What I don't agree with what Maxine was talking about, about what she's going on. I'm I'm 50/50 with the whole thing down there. I grew up down here. I grew up the whole thing down there. I don't want to go away. Also, I don't want to be fighting against it. That's how I feel about it. I know you probably don't understand what I'm saying, but.
Yes or no? Thank you, Tim. Jim?
Yes?
Jim, I'm calling, not Tim.
No.
Sorry. Eric?
Uh, no.
Eric?
Uh, yes. My name is Eric Dupu. I am the son of Kathy and Richard Dupu at 8504 Wickham Boulevard. Um, right on the row. I want to focus on the topic of eminent domain and honestly, eminent domain should be strongly opposed when it cannot be demonstrated that there is a clear and significant increase in general public welfare. I today have not seen that. I have not seen how that will be measured. I have not seen how that'll be compared to a baseline. So far, the things I've heard in this meeting are it's safer, more appealing, easy to use, to which all of those are opinions. There is no generally measurable means to actually quantify that. And to me, what that means is that what we're talking about here is a violation of property rights. You know, eminent domain, when used without a compelling public interest, really infringes upon our fundamental property rights of homeowners. The sanctity of private property is a cornerstone of our individual liberty and the American way of life. And allowing the government to seize property, this government, this village, without a valid public benefit undermines this core principle and frankly, erodes the very foundation of our free society. So I want you to think about that as we move forward here. The other thing I've noticed is that we haven't really explored all the alternatives. One of those alternatives that I have heard nothing about is potentially buying a house on Wickham Boulevard, one of the ones facing the park and using it as the means to connect the existing sidewalk to the Wickham Boulevard sidewalk and bypassing the three properties at hand. That to me is a much more cost effective way. One, the village would actually gain an asset and a property that they could use for other purposes. Uh, but they could be bypassing those three properties and everyone's a happy medium. The other option is even just buying someone's driveway. The cost you're putting into legal fees would acquire that property, I bet. And I bet you could probably do that with just offering them one of the parking spots in front of the new parking area. I haven't seen that as an alternative. Uh, you know, honestly, the decisions on eminent domain seem to be being made in a vacuum. Uh, and honestly, I find that exceptionally negligent by the leadership of this village and their duties, because what I haven't seen is I haven't seen anyone offering to create a committee where both sides of this argument come together to put that into a conversation where we talk about what we will actually present to the public to determine if the public is really behind the use of eminent domain. So far, we've had a survey that's been extremely biased, and it represented 11% of the population. And you're telling me we're going to use 11% of the population to deploy eminent domain? Frankly, I find that shameful. And to think that we're going to do this, yes, to say it's a slippery slope, this is de facto approval, the use of eminent domain from now into the future. If I lived on Greg Street, I'd be damn scared because if you're agreeing with this, you're agreeing with them taking the land all the way around Sandpoint, put a sidewalk all the way around. We could do it all the way from the break wall to the the old lighthouse. We do this once, you are giving Carbone to people to do this ongoing into the future. This is a precedent we do not want to be setting. So I urge the board to be vigilant and to be brave and to stand up for what's truly right and by God, the American way of life, which is not to steal people's private property. Thank you.
Rachel?
Yes, hi. Um, great meeting, guys. I just want to say that I am on Greg Street. I've been here for three years. And I do not believe in eminent domain. Um, I did hear one idea for the first time in this meeting that I think might be worth checking out, which is a gate. I think that as a small community, we all have the same interests and we can trust each other that maybe a gate could work. I don't know if it's already gotten to the point where it's not even a conversation that can be had because that we're into legal proceedings, but I think that that could be something that a small community could agree on. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Can you tell us your address, please?
Eight five seven six Greg Street.
Thank you. Jean? There you go, cigarette in your fucking hand.
That wasn't, sorry.
Jean?
Wasn't Jean.
Am I muted?
No, you're on.
Um, okay, um, my name is Jean Halligan. I live at 7598 Second Street. My family's been here since the 1930s. When you walk over and look at the property in question and you realize the flooding and the change in the shoreline that we've had, it appears that the rocks around the shoreline and it looks like there's a very distinct possibility that the right away isn't there anymore. And there's some great possibility that folks have been walking on private property to get through there. We don't have the answer to that necessarily today. But just because people did it for years doesn't make it right. Times and people have changed and nostalgia isn't a legal argument to evoke eminent domain. We have a lot of different people in the community, including renters on Second Street, who when the properties get really full, they come out at night to take a whiz in between the properties. And that's the kind of behavior that the Berettas have experienced, the Berettas and their neighbors. And it's absolutely disgusting. And this village shouldn't be supporting and promoting and allowing when it's possible. I realize you can't stop it all the time, but it's a climate that you as the leaders help set in the community. What's acceptable here and what's not? As someone else already stated, it's only about seven to 10% of the property owners have signed what's not even a proper survey about the right away, but not necessarily eminent domain and all of the problems that it brings to the village and the fear that it creates for the other homeowners and also for the business owners. What's next? And people have already stated this, you're going to take Leon Landing, you're going to take away 650, you're going to take away Greg Street, you're going to take away the beach, you're going to create a different public dock, you're going to create snowmobile entrances through eminent domain. Where does this begin and where does it end? And when did a small government like this begin to use a nuclear option over a situation that's already in line to be heard in court? And I think that the right thing to do is that the situation should proceed to the courts. And I hope that each side, each party, the village and the homeowners, get a fair shake and get to present their side of the information. You read one thing and you listen to one person and they're so certain that the deed says this. And you listen to somebody else and they say, no, it says that. We as people in the public, we don't know the answer to this. And I agree with other people who have said social media has made a mess out of this. But the village itself hasn't presented surveys, shown us stakes of where the property is and isn't. And you do have to think about as the village, you know, goes on into the 21st century, this is also about the homeowners. And I vehemently agree with every person who's spoken before me that feels that eminent domain is the wrong decision by the leadership to make of this village. You as leaders are further dividing the community when we're already divided due to all sorts of other issues and the political landscape in the United States. We want to have a small, peaceful community. And taking the nuclear option is not the way to help create that. And I don't think that the village board should continue on in this fashion to be to be the promoters of division. I think you should continue with the litigation as it stands. It's quite possible that both parties will not be satisfied with the decision and it will go to an appeal, but that's the fair way to resolve the matter. Thank you for your time.
Jim? You need to unmute. There, you're unmuted. But we can't hear you.
He is unmuted. It's just on his.
You need to check your microphone, please. We can't hear you. Please send us an email.
You want to give him the email to send it to?
Yeah, give him Tracy's.
Okay.
All right, anybody else on Zoom want to speak? Greg? We got to unmute Greg, please.
There's a bunch of people raising their hands.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Greg Splitzer, 7582 Forest Street. And uh, I got a lot, but I've presented three maps to the village board that I'll speak about. Uh, when I get done though, Jill, uh, I think I'm speaking for the 192 people who signed the petition to keep the right away. Yes, the Berettas have solicited letters.
This has enough storage or that I'll find one, but in my mind.
I got it.
What's that?
Hold on.
Go ahead, keep going, Greg.
Yes, the brothers have solicited letters in their defense, but nowhere near the 192 people that signed the petition. I submitted the three maps that show the subdivision of the waterfront property owned by the Eves previous to the Berettas purchasing their lot. It was Luzette E's intention not to include the right away in the sale of that waterfront property. My map number one shows parcel number two dated 1989 by the MRB group that was the engineers hired at that time by the village. The right of way is clearly not a part of this parcel two. That's what was bought. That was subdivided into three parcels. Two were sold to the owner and the owner maintained the third. Please note that the right away is shown on as an open area of the subdivision on this map. Map number two. It's dated 2003, shows one of the parcels subdivided and conveyed to the Ebs. Note that the right away was not conveyed to the Ebs. Okay, this is the property purchased by the Berettas. Map number three dated 2018 shows somehow the right away was included in the Berettas purchase of the property. I'd like to see this purchase offer. The brothers at this point are attempting to consolidate a public right away parcel into land they claim to own. It has not been in their deeds since the 1899 deed. It has somehow, it is somehow now included in these new deeds. Because the right away was always there and has been incorporated as a right away in the plans for the village master plan, the LWRP and the Greenway Trail system. I hope the village board votes to keep this property for the people of Sodas Point. As far as the expense, the brothers have forced this expense on the village. We don't have to buy our land. Won't be a part of the problem. We'll have to pay the legal fees. Oh, in closing, Google said to consolidate a public right away parcel is commonly called a land grid. Thank you.
All right, can you see who's got a hand up? All right. Rather call on them than.
There you go. So now you've got.
Area?
I'm hitting my button, so she should see it.
We're trying to get you unmuted.
Unmute. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Harriet Heilber. I have a cottage down on Greg Street at eight six five zero that my grandparents built over 100 years ago. And my husband and I now spend our summers there. The issue here that I have trouble understanding is that these three properties seem in my mind to have taken public property and incorporated into their own private property. And that's where I have real trouble with this. I don't understand how that can happen. When they bought the property, they understood that the right of way existed and was there. And now they're saying they don't acknowledge that. And they're incorporating those 20 feet or 10 feet or however many feet.
And they're incorporating those twenty feet or ten feet or however many feet into their own private property. And that seems, I don't know, incorrect, unlawful, whatever the word is. I don't know. It does seem right to me. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Max? Hey, Max, does their hand up?
Mac?
Yes, this is Angelica Mac. Um, I have a cottage on eighty-three sixty-three South Shore Road. And I just wanted to voice my opinion that I do not believe in the eminent domain. I don't think it's warranted in this situation. It's a horrible precedent as others have stated. And quite frankly, there is a sidewalk that people can use. Maybe that's not what they used fifty years ago. Maybe it's not what they used five years ago, ten years ago. But it's there. And this right of way, which, which originally was intended for something that doesn't even exist anymore. Um, from everything that I've read and heard, it, it, it doesn't impact the entire community. It impacts a very small portion of folks. And I understand they're very passionate for the people that like to use it. But for me as a taxpayer, I don't see how that is going to benefit me, my family, or anyone else on, um, South Shore or, uh, or the other parts of the village. And with the cost of living today and our taxes are very high along with our water, along with many other things that the village could address that would benefit so many more people in the community. I am personally with the Berettas. It's their property. I would never want people walking through, especially in this day and age. And they have the right to have peace and enjoy their waterfront that they pay for. And I don't think it's the village's place to start telling other people and property owners how they should be living, especially when they're not the ones who have to deal with it every day. So I am not in support of this. And I just wanted to state my opinion and my support for the Berettas. And I do not even personally know them. And I feel for them that this community feels that they can just launch a campaign against private citizens when it's really none of their business. And so I guess I just bring up again, because no one's really, I haven't heard people say, but there is a sidewalk that here today that did not exist in the past. And five minutes is not going to kill anyone. So I don't think this is about people's views or what's nice or atmosphere and nostalgia. It's just a horrible precedent to set. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a couple of people trying to unmute, so I don't know if you just want to, if they're not raising their hand.
iPhone four? Marley?
Yes, uh, I'm trying to unmute.
We, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. My name is Marleesa Schnepf. I live at eighty-one eighty-three Margarita Road. And yes, that too is part of the village of Sodas Point. The village of Sodas Point does not end at the four corners. This subject of eminent domain for a right of way that would benefit a small fraction of the village. Really only people that live or rent places from Fifth down to First Street are really the only ones that would benefit from continuing this traipsing through someone's yard. That is not a necessity. Yes, there is a sidewalk. Um, there are much bigger fish to fry in this village. There are many places that are way more unsafe. Try walking along fourteen, enjoying the waterfront along fourteen. Um, and you're taking your life in your hands because of the traffic that comes barreling down the hill. So try walking down Margarita Road. My husband and I cringe at all summer long. We watch the children that live on Margarita Road coming down Margarita Road to go to the waterfront to go fishing. And we pray all summer long that they make it there safely because there are no sidewalks. There's nothing there that would protect any pedestrians as we know, because people have gotten hit in that area. So to, to use, and I'm not willing to spend additional tax money on something that would truly only benefit a small fraction of this village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It sounded okay, right, as well?
Yeah, but who's to support this? I sure people can.
Anybody else on Zoom?
Spelt her's unmuted. I don't know if he's.
Dave, Dave, Mike Schickler?
Hi, Mike.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
You got Russ and Mike.
I appreciate everybody's comments and I can tell you that, um, I submitted a number of my comments earlier this week to Tracy. Um, I think we need to cut to the chase and talk about what is occurring going on. The Berettas applied for a permit to install a fence on their property and agreed not to block the right of way. They were approved for the permit. They installed knowingly the fence blocking the right of way. They applied to planning board to allow the fence to remain blocking the right of way. And I have to take my hand off to the members of the planning board because they denied that request. Uh, after that, the village CEO requested that that portion of the fence be removed. And the homeowners have refused to remove that part of the fence. Uh, the homeowners have refused to meet with the village attorney to see if there is an equitable agreement that could be reached that would be agreeable for all parties. And I would certainly encourage that to happening, but obviously it's not going to. Now they are suing the planning board and the board of, and the, uh, village of Sodas Points. This now involves every taxpayer, as somebody else has mentioned. And the tax money to defend the lawsuit could certainly be used for much more useful purposes. The question is, how long do we allow homeowners to ignore violations? In every other community that I lived in, if you have a violation on your property, you are given a limited period of time to remove the violation or you daily have a financial penalty that is assessed against your property. And I'm not quite sure why that hasn't happened. I'm not a big fan of eminent domain, but at this point in time, I think that the village needs to move, move forward with the initial steps to use the eminent domain to reopen the right of way. Uh, it's pending the outcome of the lawsuit against the planning board and the village. And I can tell you this, that the right of way still exists because people are now cutting through and trespassing on other people's property, on all of the other properties on uh, Wickham Boulevard. And this is totally unfair to those property owners. Thank you.
Jim? Mike Schickler?
Yes, thank you, Dave. Uh, I didn't want to reiterate what I've already heard tonight. I do uh, do not support the use of eminent domain to settle what is a ultimately a, a petty disagreement between a planning board and a few landowners. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else on Zoom? Go ahead and close us out, I guess.
First of all, can you just state your name? Kim Peach, seventy-five, South Forest Street. And I will pitch up guys, so. And I would like to know, number one, do the Berettas pay taxes on the piece of land that you're talking about? Like, it means. I'm literally asking you guys, do they pay taxes? I know you did. I just wanted to clarify by that. So if you're.
I, I'm not so certain about that.
Well, they all just not adjust. Well, they don't know. Well, then why are they saying yeah?
I don't know.
It's not clear who owns the land under that right of way.
That's my point.
I don't know. I don't know the answers. I'm going to say.
I'm, I'm. I don't, I don't know.
It's really on the assessor. We don't have that information.
I own the property, fail to tell. It says it's here and it's supported by town.
With the right of way going right to that.
It says.
Now, arguing about this, we're responding to a couple of questions. My answer was, I don't know the answer to that.
I watched, but I wasn't asking specifically. I was asking the board. I knew you would know.
It would be a question for the.
I don't know. And I knew you wouldn't. I get that. So my other question is, how can you take the tax money in one hand and in the other hand say they don't own that name? It is your land and everybody else's. Do you contribute taxes? I know I don't.
Would they be going to pay higher taxes?
Yeah, no.
Right, we're not.
Not a discussion.
My other question, so your point, no, my other question was, hey, and I will add, Jennifer, I'm sorry, I've never mentioned. But because you're a business owner out here and the rest of you are, I don't know. Did you notice a difference in your business with that fence being up as well?
I don't know that I can separate all of the different things that contribute to a change in the business we do the right.
So if businesses can't tell whether or not you have lost business from that fence being up or gained business from that fence being up, that should be another new point. Whether or not people like your business, which I'm sorry, I don't think none of what it is, okay? I'm sorry, I don't walk around a whole lot. I just.
I'm not going in.
My point again, I hear everybody saying the big, one of the big reasons for having that right of way is for the business we support. The people who are here on vacation, whether it's family, friends, little kids, old kids, people that have been here for a hundred years, with houses that gone from grandma to grandma to mom and dad, whatever. They're going to walk over there. They're going to go to jazz. They're going to, they're going to go to any of the businesses along that strip because they're here on vacation. And it shouldn't happen. Thirty-two and a half years on Lickin Rock, four, three houses away from the college. Did I know that when I bought the house? I sure did. But I wasn't prepared for sexual acts in my driveway in front yard, which I witnessed, which I witnessed getting the Berettas. Okay, I witnessed urination, rides in girls' life, it doesn't matter. Doesn't even need behind a tree. That's all girls squat, you want it behind a tree. I witnessed.
Your time is up.
My, my point is, when we first bought the house here twenty-one years ago, people were really, really nice. I'm seeing a whole different side that I find both disgusting and sad and sad. We're a small community that wishes their own, and I'm not.
Okay, all right, enough, enough. No.
Understood. There you are. Okay, thank you for answering my question. Thank you for hearing me.
Can I ask a procedural question?
A procedural question, sure. Okay, so there were a number of
letters, some ballots and everything that were submitted, um, over the last three weeks. Will the board be able to consider those and how does that work?
Yes, as I said, uh, when I finished my part of the presentation is that we have those comments. They will be shared with the board members. The board members will consider every single one of them and we will probably not respond to each one individually, but sort of lump them together in terms of topic and respond to comments topically. Um, as part of whatever the findings and determination is that will be issued sometime within the next ninety days.
They're available to public?
Those public comments?
Yes.
Yes, yes, the, the, yes, there's, they're part of the record and they will be available in the village office together with everything else. Next week, I don't know, tomorrow, that it'll be soon.
I'll be there nine AM tomorrow.
When the record is available, we will let you know in the shoreline.
So I just one more procedural question. This is very old here. Cited Jennifer Evans for making a comment on Facebook. We have another trustee that supported the opposite view on Facebook.
So it's my understanding that when you're dealing with legislators and each one of these individuals is considered a legislator, legislators are permitted to take a public position for or against something. If her business were still there and she were impacted financially, I would advise her to recuse herself. Since her business is not there, I don't believe that there is any reason for her to recuse herself based on liking a Facebook post. They're legislators. They have positions. They're not planning board members. Planning board members aren't supposed to take positions. Legislators may take a position because that's what they do.
Okay, I appreciate that for putting that that up. Thank you.
Sorry, I was a little emphatic.
It's been an issue.
All our, all our congressmen, I'm going to go on a tangent now, right? That's what your congressmen do. They say, we're for this, we're against this. They're legislators that you can take a position because they're legislators. As long as there's no financial. Thanks. Okay, so before we close this out, I'm just going to make a note. So there was Jim who was going to send an email because his microphone wasn't working. We're going to accept his email. We are also expecting, uh, letter comment from the Army Corps. We are also going to accept that. It's federal government and they have an easement underneath or in the same area we want to put our easement. So we're going to accept that comment. Um, otherwise we're going to close the public hearing. Uh, I thank everyone for listening, for being courteous. Um, was, you know, a very emotional issue, obviously for a lot of people. So certainly appreciate everyone's time and courtesy and intentions and involvement in the process. Um, and like I said, we'll take all of this under consideration, uh, when issuing a determination. So, thank you.
So I told, like, we started pushing it, we dropped it, how would we do? Let's put it back. And we kept pushing and pushing. I was like, oh my God, let's just stop. I don't, I don't know how well.